It's, I guess, seven o'clock, isn't it? Yep. Welcome. This is the August 26, 2020, meeting of the Nottingham Planning Board. In anticipation of the extension of Executive Order 2020-15, the Nottingham Planning Board will hold a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access contemporaneously. We listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. So we're still, obviously, going under some executive orders. So at this point, let me just ask who's here, and I will do my normal roll call just to acknowledge who's here for board members. Gary Anderson.
Here.
Ed Veale.
Present.
Tyler Eaton.
Here.
Joe Clough.
Present.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Ian Gast.
Here.
Sue Mooney.
Here.
And Buzz Davies.
Here.
So we have the full board plus the two alternates, Leanne Gast and Buzz Davies. Excellent. We may have a shorter meeting, but we have a couple of items to just go through first. One is the continuation from August 12, 2020. The case 20003-SUB. This is the application for 14-lot subdivision from Robert DeBerto. Two new roads will be constructed as a part of the subdivision. The property is identified as tax map 7N1N and is located off of Mitchell Road, Scenic Road. Mr. Berry is in the audience as the applicant's representative. We have some information that we owe the applicant to check up on, and one of them was relative to a zoning issue. And so we want to just let Mr. Berry know that we'll have to continue this hearing to the next meeting, and we just don't have all of the information back yet. And I know there's some information that when we provide that to you, you will have some information to send back as well. So I think both parties were agreeing that we need to continue this. So, Mr. Berry?
My only question or comment is, I noticed on the agenda, and this is for the abutter sake, that the proposal is to extend it to the ninth. I happen to have another public hearing that night in another community, so instead of extending it to the ninth and then coming back to extend it again, I would just ask if the board was inclined to extend us out to the second meeting in September. I think it might smooth things out a little bit for everybody.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I don't think we have an issue. Joanna, is that agenda the, right now, that feels like it's open? Okay. So at this point, I take a motion to continue this hearing until the second meeting in September. Joanna, can you give me the date of that one?
I've got it. So, Mr. Chairman, Ed Veale, I move that we continue case 20-003-SUB to September 23 at 7:00 PM.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do want to add, Mr. Berry, that we do expect to hear something within the next few days. So when we do, and as soon as we do, we'll provide you the information we can.
I was going to ask, assuming it's not privileged, you would just forward that to me directly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, I'll just do a roll call. Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Ed Veale.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon. Joe Clough.
Yes.
Ian Gast. Oh, you're not voting, sorry. Sue Mooney.
Yes.
Sorry, Leanne, you were just the next square in the pretty bunch.
Okay, I'll take it personally.
So then that one will be continued. The next case is an extension request. This is case 19008-SUB and SIT. It's an application from Dumas Developers for a proposed four-lot subdivision with two additional concurrent site plan reviews for 12 units each. The property is located on US Route 4, Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, identified as tax map 6 lot 222. And we did receive a request from the applicant, applicant's engineer, Barry Surveying and Engineering, and Mr. Berry is here in the audience today. So there was a request for a continuance of nine, or an extension of 90 days, and there was some various reasons relative to permitting and revising of permits, and some of it more than likely dealing with delays due to COVID-19 and review times and such. Some modifications were necessary on the plans to accommodate the permitting agency's comments. And at this point, what the board has options of providing a waiver. And because this is a subdivision regulation, the applicant can request the waiver from this provision, and I think that's a, should be relatively straightforward. Mr. Berry, did you want to add anything?
No, I'll answer any specific questions. I tried to put it succinctly as I could in my narrative, and I think you've summed it up quite well. So if there aren't any specific questions, I'd be happy to just let that rest.
So the applicant in the 90 days is requesting waiver of those provisions, and have the, basically, the expiration in 90 days would be December 11, 2020. I'll open it up to the board if they have some questions on the request.
No, this is Mr. Veale. I just wanted to point out the clarification on it. So in our, I think what's requiring the waiver is in our subdivision regulations. This is for Mr. Berry. Section 11.22, on a conditional approval, gives it a year. I think we granted it a year anyway. But under number 2, about compliance, mentions that extension shall only be granted if there have been no amendments to the zoning ordinance, subdivision regs, site plan review, blah, 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 and if all the required permits are still valid. So because there was a change in the zoning after this, that's what I think is triggering that, which is why we would need the waiver, instead of just being able to handle it procedurally.
Yep.
And suffer from that. And I think Steph can clarify on this, unless the chair knows. By acting on a waiver, we might have to renotice.
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Berry.
So I read that same line. The reason that I did not ask specifically for a waiver is because the board reviewed this subdivision and cycling concurrently, and in your regulations, it spells out a separate process for concurrent applications, and it's reiterated in both subdivision and the site plan regulations. And that phrase and line, when applicants are asking for requests for extensions, does not appear. So I felt that because this application was reviewed concurrently, we asked it to be reviewed concurrently, and that process is specifically outlined for concurrent applications, that that was not required. And I can cite pages if it's helpful for people.
Yeah, if you have that handy, I just.
So, for instance, in the subdivision regulations, it's on page 46, and it's 12.5, which is actions on completed concurrent applications. It says, let's see here. Sorry, it says a lot, I'm trying to find the line. It says, "A conditional approval shall be valid for a period determined by the planning board, but in no case shall it be granted greater than 90 days." The board granted us a year at our approval. "From the date of the conditional approval is granted unless extended in writing by the board." And that's reiterated in the site review regulations on page 46 also, and that's also in section 12.5.
So the other one was in 11.2.
That's tricky, the way I see it. Well, if we're looking at the subdivision regs, that section number 12.5, number four, I think is what you were referring to.
Yeah.
Indicates that conditional approval shall be valid for a period determined by the planning board, but no case shall be valid for a period greater than 90 days from the date of conditional approval is granted unless extended. Oddly written to me. It almost makes it sound like we only, we can only conditionally approve for 90 days unless extended.
Right.
And we did, and we extended it to a year, but I don't know, that's.
So I guess I'd look to Steph. Now, what the difference between the waiver and really just having an extension on the board's condition is what? Just that the notification has to go out, or the, what, a meeting date or something you would have to come back to, or if that was the case? What's that procedure?
So a waiver, you know, giving explicit permission for something that is, again, that is not in the regulation. And yeah, you would have to go and do the full process, the noticing and everything for that. Where it's saying one thing and then the other, I would feel more comfortable looking into this a little bit more. I don't want to guess as far as the situation. Because I remember your question, but.
Sure.
I'd like to do it and get back to you with more information.
Go ahead, Ms. Berry.
So the issue that we have, if the board can't handle this procedurally, is that we, I don't believe we have time to notice the meeting for a waiver between now and when the expiration date is set. So that's, I guess that's my real concern for the applicant.
The party's on the 11th, and the next meeting is on the 9th, correct? And, Mr. Berry, you have a prior commitment for that 9th meeting?
I do. So is this just a matter of procedure that we're having an issue with? Or, you know, it says waiver in one place, and it doesn't say it in another place. And, I mean, Mr. Berry's right, it was, it was a concurrent subdivision, or concurrent operation. And we, it says specifically under the subdivision one, it's a waiver, and not in the concurrent one. Why wouldn't it be? If it was intended to have a waiver for the concurrent one, it would and should have also say that. I think we are talking about more of the procedural part of this and not, you know, the technical applications. This has been approved by the board. It went through review process, and, you know, due to agencies that were not in control of schedules by the applicant, and I would see if they cannot get a, an extension, then, you know, there's some pretty big hardship there. My opinion would be to provide an extension. Or at least vote on providing one. So if somebody could make a motion, then that would be great, and we'll see how that vote would go, and then we'll, if people are concerned about it, in their minds it needs a waiver, then we'll have to make another motion.
And just to confirm that, so the revisions, Mr. Berry, so far, that the state has required are considered what we would probably consider minor, there wouldn't be a change in the plan where we would have to renotice anyway?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, there are a couple of grading, small grading changes, a driveway profile, which is basically on property. I think those were the majority ones. So, Neha, your DOT, and then alteration of terrain.
So I'd be fine with, was there a specific date requested to extend to?
It was December 11, 2020.
And that's probably about 90 days-ish, maybe a little more.
Thinking it's, yeah. September 11th to December 11th?
Yeah. And that makes sense, since our meeting schedule is truncated in November. So I would be okay with it, and we could, you know, look into this ahead of time if it seems like it's going to be, if another request is going to be required, we can get clarification to see if, at that point, a more formal process is needed. Because again, this isn't anything really that's on behalf of the applicant. You know, it's pretty extreme circumstance with the state and with things that delay the process for them.
Right.
So I'll make the motion if everybody's agree, well, we'll see if everybody's agreeable. I make a motion that we extend case 19-00, I'm sorry, let me start over, or send that. I make a motion that we grant a 90, failing, everybody. Is this recorded? All right. I move, make a motion that we grant the extension request for case 19-008-SUB and SIT, the December 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
That second was from Joe. I heard him press the button quicker. Any other discussion? Okay. So the motion is to provide the extension, grant the extension of 90 days. Just do a roll call. Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Ed Veale.
Yes.
Joe Clough.
Yes.
And Sue Mooney.
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous, so it's extended to that date. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you very much for everybody's consideration tonight. Should, if we run into further issues, should I ask for an extension 30 days ahead of that, just to be sure that procedurally we are adequate?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be great, if you could, if you have that, you know, insight to it. Because, I mean, alternatively, you would have to start the process all over again, and that's, you know, some extensive effort that the client, that your client went through, the applicant went through to get to this point.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Everybody have a great evening.
Yep, you too. That's all we have for hearings. So then we do have a couple other minor items on the agenda. The Master Plan Subcommittee. Somebody has recruited a new member. So you want to just mention it's Conrad? It's Conrad. Did somebody, what's that?
Mon Sager.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And he was supposed to be on tonight, but I don't see him.
Okay. Did he contact you, Joanna?
Yes.
All right, great. We'll send a $10 Olive Garden gift certificate to you. So then, schedule a meeting date. So we also do want to schedule kind of a meeting, the next meeting, for the Master Plan Committee to get together. Do we want to wait until we can get Conrad's schedule and have him at least weigh in on it? Does that sound appropriate?
Is that, is that?
Yeah.
I know we had started that subcommittee. Did it ever get to a point of having a chair? We rotated.
Yeah, I think it was Joe, Sue.
My suggestion would be that the chair of the subcommittee kind of reach out to Conrad, or to set up a date and maybe make a push for members. I know it's hard.
And this is Susan. We did not have a chair. We had a revolving chair, and we also had someone who revolved as minute taker as well. So if Joanna wants to set that up, that might be a better approach. And the two previous members from the community both resigned after maybe a half a year for one and then a whole year for the other. So it's just Joe and I. Maybe we can entice Charlene to rejoin us, but that's who we have on board. And certainly Steph's presence and assistance will be much appreciated this time around.
Okay, so let's, let's get a little bit of recruitment going, see if we can pull together a couple other members. You know, it'd be great to get another member of the public involved with it.
Definitely.
Okay, so that one, we'll just have to do, punt it a little bit. The next would be to discuss the town map issue, and I don't know, Sue or Ed, if you're kind of prepared to talk about this one? Maybe it was Sue.
She brought it up, so I'll take it there.
So, yeah, I haven't, sorry, I haven't really looked into this, but there are a couple of wrong names on a database somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll just give a quick review. At the termination of the last update of the master plan, we had run into some mislabeling on maps that we were unable to change because they were official maps that came from either DOT or somewhere else, and they get their information from Granite out of UNH. So after the wrap-up of the update, I was invited to speak with an intern who came from, like, Indiana University, and list all of those errors. And this person was supposed to get back to Granite and have those errors corrected. Well, it never happened, and those errors still appear on official maps. And I was reminded of it just recently, when somebody was coming to do an assessment of a property on Flutter Street, and they indicated that they were going to go to Deerfield Road, and because Flutter Street was labeled on their map as Deerfield Road. So if the town would like to take this up again and correct errors that might be elsewhere in town, including the Elliott River, which is mislabeled, and I think Kelsey Road at one time was mislabeled, I think it would be wise to do this before the next master plan update.
Okay. Or maybe, maybe as a part of it, I mean, what would the action item be here? Is that this list be sent again to Granite and make a new connection there that maybe is the new intern?
Yes, well, I think you need, someone from the town needs to reach out to Granite and say, what would be the procedure for correcting errors? Because I've been informed that a citizen is unable to make contact to make corrections. So there needs to be a procedure that allows the town to address these issues.
And, oh, sorry, Sue. So, Mr. Veale, I, so I, there's a, there's a lot of different kind of databases that the town has access to, is the best way to probably put it. We have our official maps that are on a maps page, on the Facebook page, the town page, that we had, most of those redone during the last master plan update by, and SRPC handled them for us. The ones I looked at for town roads and everything had Flutter Street listed as Flutter. There is also the assessing page, which is done by Avatar, I think it is, that has it as Flutter. I looked at Ms. Mooney's tax card, which showed it as Flutter. And then there's the, the road, if you go to the roads department, there's a GIS site that we use, and that shows it is Flutter. So I'm not certain where, and then Granite, on the layers I looked at, showed it as Flutter. So I'm not certain, there's a lot of layers, though, I didn't look at them all. So I'm not certain what database the assessing department is pulling from. So there might be that issue separate, you know, where, whoever the town contracted with to do our reassessment, if it might be Avatar, that whatever database they use needs to be updated. And then our overall maps should definitely be, as part of our next master plan overhaul, I think would be a good thing to get those conforming.
Yeah, yeah.
The first part would be to try to find that list of mistakes.
I think specifically at the time, it was DOT. So I don't really know where this, this all is at the moment, but just wanted to make sure that everything was up to date and up to speed.
Go ahead, Steph.
I just wanted to put a little plug in. I know at the regional level, we usually, there's a yearly process for updating roads through DOT, so I'm not sure, you know, some people would connect as far as who changes the names, but if you wanted to get in touch with Rachel Dewey at SRPC, she's usually the one that tries to connect DOT with municipal officials to make those changes. And I can forward information, her contact information, too, to you guys.
Okay.
That would be great.
I'm going to solicit a volunteer to kind of run point on this, a board member. Is there anyone that? I'm, I'm gonna solicit a volunteer to kind of run point on this, a board member. Is there anyone that has the bandwidth and can do this?
I would be willing to do that.
Thank you, Sue.
And Steph, if you can do an introduction for both of us, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And then that can roll into the Master Plan. And speaking of Master Plan, we do have a opportunity here. So, Mr. Conrad Mansager? Is that, am I saying that right?
Monsager.
Monsager, great.
Close enough.
I have that same problem. So, yeah, welcome, welcome. I've, we've kind of heard that you have interest in participating in our Master Planning process, and that's, that's great. So we've had, and I asked Joe or Sue to kind of get you up to speed, but about six months ago, we were starting in on the updates of our Master Plan, which was last updated in 2011. And there was some action that took place during, I don't know, a course of a couple of months, and then other priorities came in, and the Master Planning process got stalled a little bit, and is now being ramped back up. So, if you are volunteering to help out, then that's great. We would really appreciate that.
Happy to do that.
Joe or Sue, yeah, just, maybe just quickly summarize, maybe I did it already.
I would, to be more accurate, it was probably 16 months ago.
I'm an optimist.
So we went through each of the chapters. We reviewed the action items pertinent to each of the chapters. Eliminated some areas where, as a town, we'd already accomplished some of the goals, identified others that maybe need to be increased in priority. I think we identified, Sue, we'd be adding or updating the Rec Department or having a recreational section. I don't believe that's in there. We'd be, we're looking for data updates across the board because all the data is at least a decade old. And I think maybe some formatting as well.
So if I could ask a question, you're, what you're really doing is updating, you're really not rewriting the Master Plan.
Yes, that's correct. The format was changed at the last update. So the format as it stands is a very workable template. So what we're going is just updating the pros and the action items.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and over the course of, you know, 10 years, nine years, things change, but also things get accomplished. So some of the things that were on the Master Plan as action items have been accomplished, as Joe said. So those don't need to move forward. But maybe the next step of something similar should move forward as well to kind of shape and maintain our community.
This is Mr. Veale. One thing I'd say too is, so, yeah, the last overhaul was an overhaul, complete rewrite, and bringing it into a much nicer format. And then this one was intended to make sure to try to get everything updated, because a lot of it did change, and then, you know, there's nothing to oppose to. It's supposed to be getting, you know, the Master Plan is our vision for the community, and it's what drives planning, zoning, and other, other boards, and our actions, and it's what supports our actions. So there's nothing like opposed to, some communities do, I think it's Shirets, I feel like I'm pronouncing it wrong. Where there might be a moderated forum to like, see like, okay, where are we at, you know, what would I see? Try to get more community engagement to help drive the document. How we would do that in today's current climate, I don't know. But, but that's, that's a possibility, but, you know, it takes a kind of a separate committee to try to kind of drive those things, because it is a something that needs a lot of attention besides the normal planning process.
So I think the, the goal right now is to just get, you know, this committee reset up and re-invested into creating the update. And it would be kind of just having a new kickoff meeting and trying to get your goals and objectives put down and moving those forward.
Is, is there a timeline that's been, everybody's committed to, or?
There's, well, no one's committed to the timeline other than the 16 months that Joe took.
And that might have been conservative.
So, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's something that you don't want to have to, once you get into it, and at least a rhythm of maybe monthly meetings of that, you can get through a lot of information. It's, it's when there's, you know, long pauses of a couple of months, and trying to get that restarted is, takes, is difficult.
And say, we're trying to be ahead of it too, so I think by law, we're supposed to revisit or readopt it every 10 years. I think, and we're, we last adopted it in 2012. And so we're a bit ahead of it, ahead of it, but because it is such a big document, and getting input from various town boards, town departments, and then the public, you know, that can be a process, not to mention just the actual updates of the charts and graphs, and census data. Collecting all that is, is, is time consuming, so we try to be ahead. And we are, but it can be a longer process, and, but we, for people that can be in all steps of that, that we have some people that come on for a little while and provide great input, and then step off, but ideally, we'd have people that might see it through.
When, when we left it off, it was at the, at the point of, I think, preparing to get feedback from the various departments. And I think we're also at the stage of considering an RFP for some sort of planning entity to actually go through it and, and start making the, the formal updates. So I think we got to a really good spot, but then, to the best of my knowledge, not much has happened since then.
Yeah, so we do have budget to engage outside professional help. We did hire a planner a number of years ago to help us rewrite some of our SO Division, but also Master Planning documents, and since then, we've, we've had the Stratford Regional Planning Commission as a support for this board, and they too can offer those types of services. Support for the Master Plan, so we're not out on an island. We have other resources that do this at other communities and all that, so there is some help there too.
Are there notes from prior meetings that I can review?
Yes.
Yeah, we have minutes.
Okay. And where would I find those?
Not entirely sure.
I have a, I have a three-ring binder full of those minutes, and I made a copy and gave them to Steph when she came on board for the planning board. So I'll have to dig those out. I could possibly photocopy them and leave them with Joanna, and you can pick them up. Or I can give them to Joanna, and she can make, photocopy them. Whatever.
Yeah, it might be easier if we could get PDFs of them, and then we could just get them to me that way.
Yeah, you can, you can just scan them and email them to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll check in with Joanna.
I just text my, my network, and I do have those, so I can send those to you, Mr. Veale.
Oh, cool, thanks.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Well, I guess, I guess while we're on this, are there any other newer board members or alternates that would like to participate in the Master Plan Subcommittee?
Yeah, I think, I think we were talking about a couple meetings ago. I said I'd be willing to kind of jump on that Subcommittee as well.
Great.
Great, Ian, thank you.
Yeah, I had offered to sit on that committee too.
All right.
Would the two of you like me to send you the minutes as well?
Yeah, I'll review them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Can we appoint one of them share right now?
Not me.
How are you guys getting it at me?
Starting from my P, I'm not sure I can do that.
We'll leave that for their first conversation. Like, let them talk it between them.
Put us in a room, we'll figure it out.
Yep, yep.
Personal question for Conrad. Your wife Kathy, did she work at UNH in the UNH, in the Environmental Department?
She did, and she is right now. She's the administrator of the Coastal Response Research Center.
Yeah.
Nancy, Nancy Kinner is the director.
Yeah. Well, my bachelor's from there, so well versed with Professor Kinner and Kathy. She was always a great resource when I was there, so let me say hi to her for it.
I remember Dr. Kinner's class.
Everybody remembers Dr. Kinner's class.
Well, she's trying to retire. I think she's only got one class this spring, so.
She said that five years ago when I was there.
Yeah, I know.
Well, thank you for, for joining.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
So we'll, we'll just continue on the, the meeting here. We do have a time for a public meeting, but I don't see any other public in attendance. So I'm gonna ask for staff and board member updates, so I'll just kind of go around the room here. Gary, do you have any updates?
Yeah, just that September 17th, I signed up for a roundtable for recycling, which is part of a Subcommittee with SRPC. So, I haven't been involved in that area in the past. We're being asked to bring up topics regarding to, regarding recycling, and so a couple of them coming to mind for me are specific item recycling, so to speak, meaning, for instance, right now Nottingham puts all the metal together in one container and is paid, you know, one lump sum just for everything that's in that. I've always wondered about, you know, specific metals such as copper and aluminum, and if it's possible to separate those, but I also realize it gets tricky in trying to do that. So, anyway, it was a question I wanted to bring up, and also probably around space and recycling as well, and how to maybe overcome some of that. That's always seems to be a problem. Also, anybody that might have input there, I'd love to, you know, bring that, those questions forward.
Gary, can I say something to Susan?
Yes.
If, if it's appropriate for this conversation at your meeting, could you bring up toxic waste, household toxic waste? Because we don't, anything in town, and we, we go to Raymond with our toxic waste maybe once or twice a year. And, and people are concerned that this disappears into the ground.
I've seen that, I've seen that posted on, I don't know if it's a Nottingham page, and then maybe Rochester too, where people have concern where if you have a hazardous waste day once or twice a year, where people sell their house, you know, mid-year, you know, what are they doing with all these things as they clean out their houses? They're probably going into the, into the regular, regular trash. So I don't know, you know, if there is a process for that to make exceptions or, you know.
Definitely a great question. Yeah, the, I know even, things like paint are a problem for a lot of people, so, yeah.
And I do think, I would like to mention, I think we have the longest continuously operating recycling center in the United States in Nottingham, so of that.
That's what our sign says.
I think that's our invitation. I mentioned, we had the, the first recycling center in the country that I knew about, so.
Great, Gary, thanks. Can't wait to hear the update when you, when you attend that.
Thanks.
Ian, any updates?
Um, not really any updates. I guess back to, and we discussed earlier with Mr. Berry, so are we just waiting for feedback from Town Council in terms of the, how the interpretation of the ordinance goes with the wetland? Is that my understanding?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm guessing once we have that feedback, we'll just continue that. Nice conversation next meeting.
Yep.
Nothing else.
Okay. Ed?
I guess this would be the time to just kind of bring this back up to the board, maybe for discussion, or if a vote is needed. Whether or not we should send a letter to either Select Board or Town Admin or both related to the purview of commercial uses coming into town, and who has the, the authority on that. Trying to stay high level on it, but, so the Select Board has permitted basically a change of use or another business use of a property. It's in an agricultural residential zone. And did not get any kind of input from zoning or planning boards that I'm aware of. And we weren't presented with any kind of conceptuals or applications for it. And just procedurally, anytime there's a change of business use from what it currently is, should flag conservatively to, to the Planning Board for review, is my opinion.
Yep, corrected, that's correct, Ed.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with that, that, you know, the, the Planning Board is probably the appropriate place, because then well, either the Planning Board or the zoning board, but primarily would be the Planning Board, because we do review commercial subdivisions and commercial uses and site plans, and we do know what those requirements are for, you know, to conduct, you know, safe and accessible commercial operations. So I definitely would support that.
I think it's important to say that those two processes are the two processes that require public hearings and a butter notice to make sure that everybody's aware legally, and has a chance to speak for, against, or just get questions answered. And by surpassing that, it, it takes that, that opportunity away.
Well, I, I would be in favor of, you know, providing a letter to the Select Board, just not letting them know, you know, their feelings, and, you know, like we should be part of that process.
I agree as well.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Herr, or do you just kind of straw pulling?
No, I saw a couple heads nodding. I guess what I do is, if, if somebody has an alternative or opposing opinion to, other than sending, you know, a letter being part of that process, then I entertain that. But other than that, we you know, if there's compelling reasons not to, then please let me know.
Makes sense.
I had asked, I had asked, you know, for a spot. We didn't have our meeting this Monday because it wasn't a lot on the docket, but and then the next meeting was supposed to be Labor Day, so we're having it this Monday, and I had asked for some time for, you know, anybody from the Planning Board that wanted to come in and speak to the board.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's available, but.
For this coming Monday?
This coming Monday, yeah, 6:30 is when the meeting starts, but.
Yeah.
My only hesitation on that, Mr. Eaton, Tyler, it's, and again, it's nothing necessarily to do with the current board, but that's like, this board being called, called to the Board's Luckman, so we don't board of selectmen. So we don't answer to the board of selectmen one bit. The board of selectmen get a, get a representative on this board as an ex officio, has full, full powers in voting. But we don't answer the board, so don't feel that we should necessarily have to be there to advocate for the rights that were allotted by the state.
I, I, I wouldn't expect you to come to answer to the board. I just figured, again, this is a pressing, pressing issue, and it seems like a lot of times stuff gets, you know, strung out for weeks, months, or whatever. So, you know, the time is, it's, it's a hot topic, and, you know, you might as well get this squared away together. I mean, I believe the board should meet together, I mean, anyways, I mean, all boards in town. But, and it says that we, you know, there should be meetings, but I've never seen them take place. So besides, I mean, some people go to the budget, but I just want to get this, like I said, it's, I agree with you guys. I have no, you know, I'm just, I don't know, I'm on the board, but I'm not an attorney, I'm not this, I'm not that, don't claim to be. I mean, I would love to be an alternate on this board because, you know, I'm, I'm assigned to this board by the, the select board. But listening to everybody on this, way more experienced than me on this issue. So I don't know why the select board member couldn't be the alternate, you know? I don't mind watching you guys, you know, but whatever.
Well, Mr. Eaton, as a chairman, I do appreciate having some time at the select board. I think that would be a good way to state our position and opinion.
So Derek, can I just put in my two cents worth? I, I think that it would be prudent to write a formal letter, so that letter will go on file and be a record of this particular issue in case it pops up again, and none of us are around to remind anybody of that.
I think that's a great idea. And that was kind of my intent is to, you know, formulate a letter and, and then providing that to the select board or writing it so that the select board has that information, and we can talk about it.
And, and we're all in favor of you doing that.
Okay. So I'll take that action.
To that as well, I think that, that may also prompt an invitation to have a discussion with the selectmen, you know, on this issue. But we'll see.
Maybe we can call them to us.
That would work too.
And we have, I think in the past, we, it just didn't work out, because we've requested the zoning board, and they've, they've attended, and obviously Conservation Commission. So we have had some cross-board communications, which is, is always good.
And Chris said he would also come to our meeting if you guys would like him to.
Okay. All right, great. Let's see. Leanne, do you have any updates you want to share?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Sue?
We are anticipating a new member for the Conservation Commission, and she is expected to join us at our September meeting. So that's wonderful. We've been a party of six for almost, for over a year. So now we'll have a seventh member.
Very good. Buzz, any updates?
Nope, I'm all set.
Tyler, I know you responded. Did you have any other information you wanted to share?
I, I just wanted to go back to the, the last meeting. And again, when the, not the owner of the property, but the, the director of the, the event itself, when I had mentioned that he had said that they had got a permit for fireworks from the fire department?
Yep.
Well, I checked into that and with the, with the landowner, and they didn't get a permit from the fire department, but they were going off the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Division of Fire Safety, Office of the State Fire Marshal, and its permissible fireworks, community restrictions. And, because they weren't, you know, like if you were at, I don't know, Canvey Lake Park or something like that, they were just fireworks you could buy locally. And according to the website and the list, Nottingham has no restrictions on fireworks, you know, bought at a, say like an Epping, I guess. But, which brought to me, you said to me that, you know, maybe, maybe we, we should have some sort of restriction. I mean, how dry it's been. And I know the people from Epping, that was one of their concerns, was a firework, you know, going to their fields and start a fire. So.
Right.
I'll send it out to everybody too, what I got from them, and that's what they went off of.
Okay, yeah, I would, I definitely would have concerns of that if they're not communicating that with the local fire department.
I think a lot changes with, once it's a commercial use for money versus residential use.
Yeah.
But, yeah, thank you, thank you for that, Tyler.
Joanna, did you have any updates? Steph?
Nothing from me.
Joe?
Yes, I do have an update. I regret to inform the board due to personal circumstances. I had to put my house on the market, and it looks like it's going to be toward the end of September. And in looking for a new place to live, it, it is likely to be outside of Nottingham. So I'm not formally resigning from the board at this time. I want to stay involved and active until my residency ends. But it's looking like toward the end of September I will have to formally resign.
That's too bad.
Yeah, we're sorry to hear that, Joe.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. I know you've seemed to have enjoyed it, and I'm sure you'll be valuable no matter where you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're here.
Anybody else have any other updates or questions? Okay, so the last thing we have on our agenda is just the minutes. You know, I wanted to just check with Joanna to see if there's minutes.
I don't have minutes yet. I've received edits from Sue on the July 8th.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Working as fast as I can on both.
Appreciate that. Yep. All right, well, that's the last thing on this agenda.
I mean, I moved that we adjourned?
Yeah, that would be good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Joe. Good night, everybody. Have fun. Thanks for coming. Bye, Conrad.
Thank you, Conrad.
Good night.